Records constantly. So, welcome, Happy New Years to the Lander County Commission Meeting Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissions. So, we're going to move forward. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Brian, actually JR, will you lead us in a pledge allegiance?
Yep.
I don't remember all the words.
Just get it started.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the free public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to have a moment of silence?
Better memorize that again.
All right, moving forward. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any day. Commissioner reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
Thank you, and New Year wishes to all my compadres here. Thank you. We did have a NACO meeting on the 18th of December after our last meeting. Kind of summarized everything that was going on for the year. Couple things that we were excited about that got funded, of course, and one was Pilt for the Federal Public Lands, and that was insured full funding for nineteen twenty, for ninety, for 2020 and 2021. Both the US House and US Senate had it in their appropriation bill, so we're cool on that. Also, the secure two years of funding for secure rural schools. So, that was all good, and that was in the 2020 appropriation bill. A couple things I just wanted to highlight. Our new NACO president is Marilynne Kirkpatrick from Clark County. She's the commissioner there. And we had a couple different speakers. One actually was Carissa Loper. She's the Deputy Bureau Chief, Division of Public and Behavior Health for the State of Nevada Vaccine Plan, and our playbook on that. She gave us a highlight on what was going on in our local implementation and the different partnerships that they will be working with. I think most of you have been on top of the update on the Fallon Range and Training Complex Modernization and the Nevada Test Site Training Range. We've been working on that for so long. Actually, in the National Defense Authorization Act, they did not get any additional land at all. So, there's no more airspace, and of course, the Department of Defense is naturally would be coming forward to request legislation action in our new session of Congress, I'm sure. But that just went mute, all the work that we've done on it, and all the meetings and everything, and they did not get anything in that Authorization Act. So, that was just kind of null and void, and we started over on that. The only other thing is, we've still got a lot of BDRs coming in and a lot of new bills, and NACO has been on top of that, of course, already reading them and working with our group there. And I'm very proud to say that our county manager stepped forward to be on the Legislative Subcommittee for NACO. So, he'll be on top of everything and be able to track everything along with us and keep us up to date. So, thank you very much, Bert, for stepping forward on that.
All right.
No, I don't have any meetings since the last meeting we had.
All right, thank you. I haven't had any meetings, but I do have a little bit of information. I was requested to also sit on that Subcommittee, which I will be doing. They contacted me and asked if I would sit on that committee, so I will be sitting on that as well, which I was flattered that they contacted me. So, let it begin. Holy smokes. And with that being said, I have contacted, and I know I've spoken to a few of you about this already, but I'm going to keep reiterating this. I keep contacting Ty Gray, which is the President of Nevada Mining Association, on these bills that are coming up. I keep making sure that I make contact with him to find out, and he keeps promising that we are the host counties and that they're going to fight for us. They're not just going to roll over and pay out the state that they want to be good people within our counties and that they know that they owe, and they're going to work with us as best as possible. So, I keep that conversation going, and he hasn't ignored my calls when I call, so far that's a good thing. And beyond that, I'm good.
No reports.
No reports? Then you're too new. All right. Moving forward. All right, for staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
All right, we have a little bit of a lengthy report for you guys today. So far, for Lander County, we have 397 total confirmed COVID cases. We have 27 that are currently active, which that's came down considerably since my last report to you guys. I believe it was in the mid 50s last time I reported to you guys. 362 recovered. We have six deaths now, reporting two new deaths, so we'd like to send our condolences out to them families. One of them had some other conditions that were pretty severe, but either way. So, then with that is what I do want to get to, and is Ms. Murphy that's sitting back here. And Juicy would have been here. She'd have loved to have been here, but she had a family emergency that she's dealing with, so Ms. Murphy's retiring after 30 years of service. I'm not sure what you'd get somebody like you that has been so good to everybody in our county, but you know, outstanding service and third year is the best that we can come up with, and we appreciate everything you've done. You will be deeply missed because you are just a happy person that I love seeing every day, so.
Well, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Truly appreciate it. Like I say, if Juicy could have been here, she'd have been here to present that to you. You know that as well, so she appreciates you more than you know.
And for working with you all those years, you have been nothing but a pleasure to work with, truly a pleasure to work with, and you will be missed.
And here's, it even got its own chime, right?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have one more to give out as soon as they show up. They're coming over from the Senior Center. We have Sandy Smith is going to be retiring there, and when she shows up, I will give her her plaque as well. But a couple things I would like to report to the Commission as well as the community so that we stay fact-based and that we don't get caught up in the gossip mill of Battle Mountain is, and I don't mean that in a bad way, is that we did do interviews and hired for the Senior Center position. I did not sit on the interviews because I had a family member that was interviewing for it that currently works over there. I didn't let Liz sit in on it, and she didn't want to sit in on it as well because she had a fellow friend that was interviewing for the position. So, we had our Public Works Director, our Finance, and another lady over here in our office sat in on the interviews, and it was unanimous. They picked Tonya Baker, so she's going to be our new Senior Center Advisor over there. And then, what else did I have there? Oh, and then that led to Justice Court hiring, and Justice Court hired Jenny Martin. Would like to congratulate her for that job, but that did not go through our HR department or administration on this side of it. That went straight through Justice Court, so we had no involvement with the hiring of that position. I just want that to be clear for everybody. And then the last thing that will probably come trickling down is my daughter did interview and did get a job as a lifeguard. I also did not sit on the interview panel for that, nor did our HR. So that, and that, there are, all the tiers are there of separation. There is no, and she will be terminated for not doing her job just the same as anybody else would, and hopefully to a slightly higher standard. But I just wanted not only the board to be aware of that, but anybody in the public that would have any concern or comment on that to know exactly how that all went, because we're trying to keep as much separation and as much transparency as possible.
Thank you, Bert.
And then, as everybody can see, we have the senior bus out front that Ms. Waits and T-Rex bikes over there in Elko donated. I drove it back from Elko. It's a beautiful running bus, doesn't have very many miles on it, drives really nice. I can't believe you guys donated such a nice bus. Usually when we get donations, they're not that nice, so thank you very much. I apologize for the prolonged period of getting emblems put on the side of it, but that was a task in itself. And now that Ms. Smith showed up, she's... Oh, hold on. Well, we have some other people coming in waiting to see you as well. So, I want to point out something else that happened that I believe can't be overlooked and some credit needs to be given. I wish the audience was completely packed today, even though we have COVID going on. If nothing else, we can have that packed, because Lakin and Heidi went and did some extra research on some billing that just didn't quite feel right, and they saved the county $59,000 that we were being overbilled by Pool Pack. And I believe that extra work and that extra dedication deserves some sort of light shined on it.
Well, thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Yeah, so that's, so I thought that was pretty neat. Do we have anybody else coming over from the Senior Center?
Yeah, we have seven right now.
Okay.
They were just born in.
Okay, beautiful.
Is that all?
Let's see here.
On the lands bill, real quick, have we heard or know where we're at on our lands bills?
So, that's going to be another upcoming agenda item. We've been asked to join Oko's lands bill and to kind of drop where we are on ours, and it's, it doesn't seem like it may be the best thing, but it's going to be something that we'll put on this upcoming agenda to discuss and see where we stand. I know that with everything going on in Washington right now, that it hasn't been moving super fast, but...
I just thought I'd check.
Make sure you get in touch with Bert Paris.
Okay.
On that issue, because he put a lot of time into that, into a section of that lands bill down there in Antelope Valley, designating one of the mountains down there as a wilderness area.
Yes.
So, we don't want to lose that. That was a good compromise, because there's nothing on top.
Okay. All righty, now I think we have our whole staff from our Senior Center here that take care of our seniors, and Sandy being the leader of that pack. I see her kind of tuck herself in there, but we're going to draw you up in front and So, Ms. Sandy, I know that this says 23 years, and I know your service to our county has probably been much more, but I would like to thank you for your service. I can't believe you're retiring and going to enjoy babysitting your grandkids.
No, that's not on my agenda.
But thank you very much for your service and your staff here is the ones that probably enjoy you more than anybody, but I appreciate you, and I hope that that means something. You go enjoy the rest of it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hold on, we'll get it.
Even has it facing the right way, that's amazing.
Sandy, do you want to turn this way?
I'll put this behind my back.
Your wife taught you well.
Sandy, the seniors are going to miss you. I know that you built a lot of good relationships over there.
Yeah.
You can stop and go over there and get a bite eat around and see how we're holding up.
I've enjoyed my many years here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
And that concludes my report, and congratulations, JR. We look forward to working with you.
Yes. All right. Moving forward. So, for public comment, for non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized item at the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, at the discretion of the board, reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment? All right. Not hearing any. We're going to move forward. For consent agenda, all items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the County Commission with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during the meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. All right, number one, approval of January 4, 2020, agenda notice. Number two, approval of January 7, 2020, special budget workshop meeting. Number three, approval of August 13, 2020, meeting minutes. Number four, approval of August 27, 2020, meeting minutes. Number five, approval of September 10, 2020, meeting minutes. Number six, approval of September 24, 2020, meeting minutes. Number seven, approval of December 17, 2020, meeting minutes. Number eight, approval of payroll change requests. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I did not receive any minutes at all, so I make a motion that we approve number one, the agenda for today, January 4, 2021, and number eight, the approval of payroll change requests.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So, first by Patsy, a second by Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on, for possible action to approve, disapprove the payment of bills, we're going to go ahead and pull out of those bills, check number 210287 and number 210353. Do we have any other checks that need to be removed from the stack?
I'll make a motion that we approve the balance of the bills.
All right, so Patsy made the motion. Art, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we'll make a motion that we approve check number 210257 and 210353. Oh, it was 287, right? And 210353.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Patsy made the motion, Art, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained?
I abstained because I made the point is...
All right, very good. Moving forward. All right. For possible action to elect a chair and vice chair to the Lander County Board of Commission for 2021 calendar year, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we keep Kathy as our chair, and Art, are you still good with vice chair?
Yeah, I guess.
I'll just, I'll make a motion that we keep it how it is.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Brian made the motion. JR, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
I'm sorry, did you include the vice chair on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
He nominated Art. All right. Any opposed? So, we're good? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Ms. Sandra, we might go to four. I don't know. Are you planning on sticking around, JR? Okay, okay.
Are we good? All right. Go, move them forward. So, for possible action to appoint the Lander County Commissioners to the following various 2021 Advisory Boards, Category 1, Lander County Board of Equalization, Lander County Convention and Tourism, Lander County Debt Management Commission, Lander County Planning Commission. Am I, so am I reading all the way through all of these and then we just go one by one? Is that how we're doing it? Okay. Lander County Regional Transportation Commission, B, Category 2, Lander County Advisory Board Managed Wildlife, Wildlife, excuse me, C, Category 3, Austin Airport Advisory Board, number 2, Battle Mountain Livestock Event Center Advisory Board, number 3, Local Emergency Planning Commission, number 4, Lander County Economic Development Authority, number 5, Lander County Public Use Advisory Planning Commission, D, 4, 1, Lander County Conservation District, number 2, Lander County Hospital District, number 3, Lander County Safety Committee, number 4, Lander County, Central Nevada Regional Water Authority, number 5, Department of Energy Board of Representatives, number 6, Humboldt River Basin Water Authority, number 7, State Land Use Planning and Advisory Committee, number 8, Nevada Association of Counties, number 9, Nevada Works, number 10, Pool Pack. All right. So, who's...
I'm on Board of Equalization. I'll stay on there.
So, Brian? So, Brian's going to go ahead for the equalization. Lander County Convention and Tourism, I can go ahead and continue on that one?
I'll stay as the alternate.
All right. 3, Lander County Debt Management Commission?
I'm on that. I'll stay on that.
Okay, Brian. Lander County Planning Commission?
I don't think there's a Commissioner except on that board.
On the Lander County Planning Commission? Nobody, we don't have a representative on that one, do we?
No. They changed its status. That's why I don't want anyone.
Yeah, no Commissioners designated.
Okay.
Yes, we just leave that one blank.
Okay. Lander County Regional Transportation Committee, Commission?
That was Judy and I.
I'm on it as an alternate. I'll stay as the alternate.
Anything that Judy was on, JR takes, right?
Are you taking that one?
I'll take it.
Okay. All right, and then Brian's the alternate. So, for the Lander County Advisory Board of Managed Wildlife?
We don't have a Commissioner on that one either.
So, moving forward, Austin Airport Advisory Board?
Let me go back to that one real quick. Is there a reason why we don't have a Commissioner that serves on that board?
It's the status of the board. It's just the, the NRS will dictate where it needs to be.
That dictates why it is that way. So, it's nothing that we can change within our own policy to designate it?
I don't think so. That's the way I understand it.
You can always attend. It's just that we don't have a representative.
I think that somebody can be appointed to show up there and report back to our commission on it. I just don't think that you can be a voting member on that board. So, if you guys would like to appoint somebody to be kind of a lead on bringing information back to this commission as a whole, I believe you can, but I just don't believe you can be on there as a voting member.
What do you guys think about that?
Well, there are some boards you're just, you're assigned to, but you can't vote.
Right.
So, you see down here, the Battle Mountain Livestock, you got Judy and Brian not voting. I think it depends on the status of the board.
Yes, no, and I believe a lot of these other ones that you guys are appointed to, if they're lacking voting members, that you can actually be a carrying vote. You actually don't vote on everything as it goes, but once, if they don't have enough people to vote, you can be the deciding factor.
Or a tiebreaker.
Yes.
It depends on the category, and it's all set by NRS.
Yes, but if you guys would like somebody to show up at these meetings, you guys can kind of appoint a Commissioner to show up and report back to the commission as a whole.
Heck, I nominate Brian to go to Wildlife Board, man.
Brian, you want that one?
I'll take it.
Okay. All right. So, Austin Advisory, Austin Airport Advisory Board?
I'll take that one. I don't think anybody wants to drive all the way down there when I'm right there. Okay.
So, Battle Mountain Livestock Event Center Advisory Board? Who was on that before?
That was Judy and Brian as an alternate.
That was an alternate.
And if, if we need, do we need any members on that? No, we're okay. If there's any boards that we need members on, would you advertise it? Oh, you bet.
We have that.
No, we, we need a representative. They're non-voting on the advisory boards, but we still need them. We're still assigned.
Right.
So, did JR want to take Judy's place, or Brian, did you want to step up on the livestock events?
I'll stay as an alternate on it.
That's on the...
Livestock Event Center?
Yeah. Okay, I'll stay on that one.
All right. Thank you. Local Emergency Planning Commission?
Do you want to move up to the representatives and get an alternate?
On number 2?
On Local Emergency Planning, isn't that where you're at?
Yeah, I just went to the Local Emergency Planning Commission. Because Judy...
You asked me if you want to be the actual one instead of the alternate.
Oh, yeah, I can. And do we have anybody that wants to be an alternate?
So, who's the alternate?
I'll take alternate if you're the alternate.
Okay. All right, Lander County Economic Development Authority. Who was on that?
You were.
I were?
You were.
I were, I was.
And I was the alternate?
Oh, okay. So, I will go back on that. So, do we have an alternate?
Okay, I'll stay as alternate then.
Okay. Because I'm used to seeing it say Lita. That's what threw me off. Lander County Public Lands Advisory Planning Commission?
Yeah, I think we need another person on there. I'll stay.
Yeah, we need an alternate then.
Yeah, JR, you want to be the alternate on Pool Off?
Yeah, I'll do that. Couple phones.
All right. Very good. Lander County Conservation District? Who's on them now?
Judy.
Judy?
Brian was the member, Judy was the alternate on that.
Okay. So then, do we have an alternate?
Do you want to be the alternate on that, JR?
Yeah, I guess.
Lander County Hospital District, I'll stay on.
Brian was the alternate.
Do you want to be the alternate?
No, I said Brian was the alternate.
I know, do you want to be the alternate?
Going once, going twice.
I'll be the alternate.
Okay. Lander County Safety Committee?
Art, you were on that one.
Which one?
The Safety Committee?
Yeah, I'll stick on that.
Okay.
Whenever, whenever we have a safety meeting.
Okay. Does that need an alternate?
No.
Very good. Central Nevada Regional Water Authority?
That was Kathy and Judy.
Yeah, that was one I was on that I don't want to do.
Kathy and Judy?
Yeah. So, I can, I mean, I can be the alternate if you want to go ahead, and it's...
There's no alternate.
We have two members, and it's not an alternate. Two of us, two of us have almost gone.
It's, they do the, they've been doing theirs by meeting, and it's quarterly.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Do you need somebody on that one?
Huh?
JR, we need another Commissioner.
Okay, I'll step up for the Central Nevada one then.
Okay.
So, JR and Patsy make the record service, like, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Department of Energy Board of Representatives?
I'm on it as an alternate. I'll stay as the alternate.
Who is it?
Yeah, that's, that's, actually, because we have the DOE office out of Austin. I've stayed on it, but we haven't had any meetings, but if they ever start up to have them or whatever, we have to have somebody on it, so I'll stay.
Okay, so, Patsy and Brian on that one. Humboldt River Basin Water Authority?
Okay, that was you and Judy.
Yes, that was one to be on. I mean, I will, if somebody also wants, I mean...
Are you going to stay on that one, Kathy?
I would, I would too. But if nobody else does, I will.
Still need somebody else.
Want the Water Basin Authority, JR?
Art, do you want to do the Humboldt River?
No.
Okay.
Huh? Do we have someone?
JR take it?
Yeah.
JR step forward?
Yeah.
Yeah. Lander County Use Planning Advisory Committee?
Yeah, that's still Art. That's a four-year term.
Yeah, that's four years.
Okay. So, Nevada Association of Counties, we only actually need one on there because...
Yeah, but I'm going to, I'm going to step down from my position, and I'll be alternate and let Patsy be the representative.
Okay.
Patsy has a real passion for that.
Very good. Nevada Works?[1772.81] Who was on that?
I got that.
Do you want that still?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Pool Pack? What is that exactly?
Their whole board is actually run by all of the counties, and the counties have membership with our county manager. And the commissioners are supposed to have a representative to sit on the board, along with all the hospital districts and government agencies. They're the ones, it's usually full two-day meetings, although they're doing literal now, but it's very intense. I mean, your workbook is like this, and I sat on it for like 10 years with the hospital, and a few years here, and then Judy took it, so.
Are they doing it virtual, or are they doing?
Oh, they're doing virtual right now.
Okay.
But there's, there's, it's an intense one, I mean, the board runs Pool Pack, basically. And what they do with investments and, I mean, the whole thing, it's.
Patsy, you weren't?
Now particularly about we need a representative.
I'll take it.
You'll take it, all right.
Patsy's getting stretched pretty tight.
Okay, so, all right, do we have all that? Are we good to go? All right, we got all of our representatives, very good.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve the representative as we have just designated to all of the, our board appointments for Lander County.
I'll second.
All right, Patsy made the motion, Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you everyone.
Would you please get this redone for us first, best?
All right, moving on. For possible action to approve/disapprove appointment of one individual to serve on the Lander County Conservation District, which is currently, currently has one vacancy. New terms are three years, from January 1st 2021 through December 31st 2022. And to consider all of the following applicants to include Jeri Anis.
And I would, I would just like to clarify, we did have a misprint there, that is a two-year term, not a, not a three-year term. It is correct on the 2021 through the 2022, it's just incorrect on the three years, it's only a two-year.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we appoint Jeri Anis to the board.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, Brian made the motion, Patsy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good.
For the record, I just want to note, it is a reappointment, so we appreciate him stepping back.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, very much. All right, so Correspondence Reports, future agenda items.
So I'd like us, I'd like to see us start doing something with these 2477 roads, I just think it's something that we should probably move on.
Now, I don't know where.
Art?
What the heck's the guy's name? The guy that comes from Utah, the older fellow?
Oh, yeah, Ken Brown.
Ken Brown, thank you. Ken Brown, at the last Pool Off meeting, he reported that our 2477 plant was rolling right along. So I don't know where Ken got that information or what paperwork he has.
Yeah, because I think it boils down to, we have to start cataloging and stuff, correct, as a county?
So our roads are cataloged, we've, we've went out and mapped our roads and have done, have done a bunch of the work, because what we haven't done is start putting it in front of NDOT for their approval. And the BLM, and starting to get everybody else to sign off on it. I believe that, Patsy's more familiar with it, a second that I brought it up, she knew exactly what I was talking about, but in one of the NACO meetings, a commissioner from Elko County was talking about a bill that was going out that could possibly bring all the lands back to the, within the counties. That they wouldn't be 2477 roads or anything, but all, all land within the border of a county would be controlled by that county. And that was a bill that they were trying to get passed. So at that time, it kind of put everybody on a little bit of a slower move towards these 2477 roads, on whether we wanted to address them or not. I know that it slowed other counties down, I reached out to Humboldt County and I reached out to Elko County both, and, and they both had the same, same stance, that they were kind of, they would rather drag their feet than, for lack of better words, than, than to pull the trigger and be locked into something that they might have to try to get out of later. Now, we can, we can go whichever, whichever route you guys so choose, I'm happy to go either way, we have mapped the roads out, and it's a matter of us submitting some of these things in some legal courses that would have to go through TED as far as, as getting them done through NDOT and BLM.
What do you guys think?
Just a note on that, of course, we don't know what's gonna happen with Department of Interior and who's gonna be in there, but this was actually really pushed forward by, by our president. President Trump really wanted it all done, they're all 2477, they're all yours unless otherwise, and, and that's what we were all kind of waiting for to see. But now with, with the election, I'm not sure what's gonna happen, so I think we're all just gonna wait and see what happens to that bill, if anybody else has any passion to continue with it on that side, and so I, I think we might want to wait on the Correspondence part.
Well, I tend to agree with Brian, let's bring it forward, and if, decide if we need to hire somebody to get this done. And if we need to hire somebody to get this done, let's get it done.
Well, because that's the thing, that's the one thing, that's the one particular road that keeps coming up that I have people calling me about is that North Fork Road. The guy can stick, he can, I mean, he has it locked off, so he's in violation of law.
Okay, we'll put it on the agenda so we can all talk about it.
Okay, good.
Great, okay.
We found, we researched that, and that gate is on BLM land. I forwarded that information to Doug Fruttato several years ago, so.
Okay, and then, do we need to have something on the agenda to discuss this Army Corps of Engineers taking their payment? I mean, were they, were they lawful to do that?
I don't know that we want to do that just yet, because it's in, it's in litigation.
Okay.
So.
We, we.
I thought that was stopped, I thought we started getting that money again.
We, we could go to a closed session to discuss that, we could put it on the agenda and go to a closed session so the, so the.
We'll do that, we'll do that at the end, yeah.
Yep.
And then, another thing I was thinking in just, this past 2020 is, does anybody have an appetite for setting a policy where we, as a, as a county, try to buy American? Mom and pop type thing, rather than buying from these big Amazons and Walmarts and, and support our own country? I mean, does anybody have an appetite for that?
I do.
I'd like to.
A hundred percent.
I'd like to have that.
We can certainly put it on the agenda and discuss it, I think it's a great idea.
I agree.
And then one other thing is, I just noticed like traveling rural Nevada here, you know, you go to Elko, you go to Winemucca, they have some really nice stuff coming off their freeway at their overpasses that kind of signifies their town. Is that something that we could possibly look at maybe doing this year?
Was that the DOT that paid for that state?
That state, but is that something that we would liaison with them that, as like, as one of our projects that we want to do?
Can.
Yeah, yeah, we can reach out to them for sure, I don't think anything happens without us reaching out and trying to, I know that.
We have that list every year that we go over, right? It's like, what are, what are your, our orders of importance is what we'd like to see done, I'd like to see that done, I think that's pretty cool, I agree.
Well, the other thing is, is we can always look at getting something in there right away and getting permission and putting up our own stuff. We can always do that, I mean, if they won't do it, so we can put it on the agenda and we'll discuss.
Maybe discuss it, yeah.
Both ways, yeah.
Anyway, that's, that's what I have.
I have, this will be a course that has been beat a million times, but I know it's a state route as far as a front street for that stop sign. If there's something, you know, even if we could, I don't know what to do, but you sit there and you see 100 cars go through there in an hour that run that stop sign, and it's just, it's a matter of time before. And I know DOT won't do anything about it.
Where's that at, by the Elko?
Yeah, I mean, that, that four-way stop is just, and there's semis that go through there, and there's all kinds of stuff, and I know we've talked about this before, and I know we've had, you know, suggestions on what we could do. So if we can get, if we can move forward on trying to get that before somebody's killed in that, I just, it's just a time before that happens.
Well, they've had a red blinking light in the middle, now they got stop signs that have the red going around it. Maybe if they paint stripes from La Mer's all the way, and then from the Mexican Restaurant all the way, yellow stripes, that might get their attention.
So, so that is a county responsibility, that, that stop signs and the, and the light. We're in process right now of getting approval to hang something off of their poles there to get another red light up there.
Oh, cool.
We gotta do something.
But it's, it's been a slow-moving train, it's not something that, that we, we've slacked on, it's just.
No, and I know that, and I know, and I was more on the DOT not wanting, because we've had them here before, and they basically, you know, said we're not doing anything about it, but anyone that sits there and eats breakfast and sort of watching the semis and the cars go through there, you know, 50 miles an hour, and it's just, it's bound to happen eventually, somebody's gonna be T-boned and, you know, killed in that intersection, and it's a shame.
How about speed bumps?
Yeah, but it's DOT, I mean, they won't, I don't know if they'll allow us, yeah, to do anything other than, I think the hanging blinking light, it was at least something that.
We did that before.
So.
I believe on that light, Sadie, for the record, was that there was equipment that was all through that nailed that, so that's where there was a clearance or something that went on with that one, why it, why it came down?
Well, maybe when they go to do their clearances or something, if it's a lot, something that can be taken down when they're using their wide load, when they're taking a wide load, that, I don't know, just any kind of suggestion.
Have people to go over in front of them and lift, have those wire lifts and what have you, that lifts those, so.
I did ask Bert to put on a resolution for a radon month, which is January, because actually, the radon is the leading cause of cancer death in adults that do not smoke. Number two, yeah. And also I wondered, don't we have to have something on with, with the county manager position?
Yeah, I have, I have that on the next agenda, I have a few contracts, and myself and the Public Works.
Yes.
We'll, we'll be on there.
What do you want next, me?
Okay, do we want any reports from anybody? Public Works, building, anything like that?
Probably a Public Works would be good to have a.
Sorry, I missed, what did you say?
I wondered if we wanted any reports from any of our, our departments, Public Works, and building and planning and something like that, to see where we're going for the, for the rest of the year? Well, fiscal year, I should say.
I don't know if that's, are we good? So do we have any further public comment? Come forward, please.
Jeri Anis, for the record, first, first of all, thank you very much for your support for my reappointment to the Conservation District. Second of all, I just want to say how impressed I was that Bert noticed the typo on the, on this agenda. I was gonna bring that up, because it is just a two-year term. I'm so impressed that I'm not gonna ask if his daughter knows how to swim or not. I want to also just say that, as you all know, Conservation District has a informational meeting every other month when we bring in speakers. And our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 9th at 5:30 PM, so I'll be looking for Brian and JR to, to be there, we've, we've got a really good meeting planned. And then also, lastly for the CD, I just want, want to, I don't know if this is really that appropriate, but want to put it out there in the community that since, you know, as you all know, Shannon Bearman was our clerk for the Conservation District, and since she's been brought over here to work full-time. Since that time, we've been advertising and looking for a part-time clerk for the Conservation District. And so if you know of anybody that's interested in working in that type of a field on a part-time basis, we do have a website that has it posted, or they can contact myself or Paul Temera. And then lastly, in regard to the 2477 comments that were made, I recall, I was on the Public Land Use Advisory Committee probably 12 years ago. And we, at that time, were very attuned to the catalog, cataloging that was taking place. That was when Steve Williams was at the Forest Service Den in Austin, and so I know they have a meeting tonight, Art, and so that might be something that they might want to check the minutes on, because I think indeed, a lot of work was done on the catalog, cataloging portion of that a number of years ago, so you know, don't want to duplicate it. That's all I've got, again, thanks very much, Conservation District appreciates your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
So any other further, any comment, public comment? I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Second. Brian made the motion, Art.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Aye.
Aye.
Do we want to have a litigation?
Judy wanted, you wanted to have a litigation meeting?
Oh, we can't, or since we adjourned?